Welcome to the regular meeting of the Howell Township Board of Education in our new and future home for our meetings. It is now time, it is 7 o'clock, it is now time for the regular meeting of the Board of Education to come to order. Roll call of the board. Mr. German.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Here.
Dr. Lowe.
Here.
Mrs. Malley.
Here.
Mrs. Mangano is expected, yes? Mr. Bonjovani?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Present.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Bonjovani.
Here.
A quorum is present, shall we rise to salute the flag and then remain standing while Abigail Mamina gives us a rendition of the National Anthem, a 5th grade student from Aldridge.
I... ......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Abigail. Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on November 13, 2019. It is now time for our recognition. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bonjovani, it's your pleasure, I'll start the portion of our meeting where we take care of our recognition.
Sure, let me say one thing.
Sure.
And to the students who are in the other room, and for all of you here, as you know, this is the first time we're doing our town, our board meeting here in this facility. It's going to be a little bit different for us, certainly we love looking out and seeing this many people, we don't really see this many people at a lot of the meetings, but we have such a large recognition tonight. So, especially for the students, for what it's worth, you'll be able to someday say, "Well, I was at the first meeting that they had back at that building." So, we welcome you, we're looking forward to being here and to seeing how this all works out.
Thank you, Sark, and...
Do you want to invite the board down?
Yeah, so, at this point, we will begin our recognitions, we do have a number of recognitions, you can tell by the size of the crowd, and quite frankly, it's why the board volunteers to serve, and it's why teachers and educators and paraprofessionals and the folks that make sure the buildings are in order, it's the very reason, the kids' success. And tonight, we'll take an opportunity to recognize a large number of our students for things that they've done, both in the classrooms, on athletic fields, and as well as staff members for the participation in many programs. So, this evening, we will start with our Steam Tank Challenge recognition. I'll invite our Director of Digital Learning and Innovation, Claire Engel, to the podium to introduce this program and the amazing results.
Are we doing the National Anthem first?
At this time, we're going to do the National Anthem recognition first, sir. It's the new room, I would have never done that in the old setting. Abigail, I'm sorry.
It's a student's birthday, I have to go for them.
So, as I indicated a moment ago, there'll be a few recognitions, I'll just ask for the folks who are here with their kids and their parents, just that we can be patient and respectful to all the recipients, we'll try to move through it quickly, but when we have traffic in and out, it kind of takes away from some of the other students being recognized or staff members, so just bear with us. Ms. Engel?
Thank you, Ms. Isola. So, Steam Tank provides a platform to experience real-world problem-solving. It allows them to think like entrepreneurs and design and create whatever students can dream, using fields of science, technology, engineering, mathematics, and the arts. The Steam Tank competition was modeled around the popular TV show that you all might be familiar with, Shark Tank. In Steam Tank, students create innovative products and solutions to problems that contain sustainable components. Teams pitch their innovations to a judging panel of entrepreneurs and business leaders at a regional level. Winners at the regional level then advance to compete in the finals at the annual New Jersey School Boards workshop. Tonight, we are here to recognize four teams that placed in the top three for their designated grade bands. But before we do so, I'd really like to put this in perspective for the audience members, because this was the number of submissions that these teams were up against. So, for the state of New Jersey, there were a total of 560 submissions. Of those 560 submissions, 100 were for high school, 150 for middle school, and 310 for elementary school. So, the students that then competed went on, and 330 of those 560 were selected to go to regionals. 59 for the high school, 80 for the middle school, and 195 for the elementary school. Then, of those 330, 90 were selected to go to the finals. So then, when we break that down for the middle school, and of course, elementary school for us as well, our students were competing amongst 27 teams for the middle school and 30 for the elementary school for the state of New Jersey. And I'm pleased to tell you that those four teams definitely came in the top three, two of which placed first, and two placed in the third for their division. So, at this time, I'd like to call up the advisors, and we'll first start with our advisors for Memorial. Come on up, is Mrs. Donzelli, and also, I think Mrs. Stenard had a prior engagement, so, Mr. Greter, I think, is here for Memorial, supporting them as well.
So, Mrs. Donzelli nominated me to speak for Smart Collar. She does all of the work with Mrs. Stenard behind the scenes, so it's really just my privilege and my honor to see these three students here tonight. Their invention is a tracking device, a collar, that is, easily locates your lost pet, and it is a simple idea that I watched them develop from a simple sketch into a wonderful presentation. And by the time they got to Atlantic City, we had a Go model, a Pro model, we had a full-blown infomercial. It was an amazing journey to watch these three students go from very quiet, reserved students that are hard workers to confident, just poised, and, you know, we could not be more proud of them. They answered tremendous and very difficult questions from judges at not only Camp Evans, but also at Atlantic City at School Boards Convention, and it is an amazing journey to really watch these kids develop. So, Ashley, and Aiden, and Nicholas, tremendous work, we are super proud of you at Memorial, and the same goes true to Mrs. Donzelli and Mrs. Stenard, who just did an amazing job with them all, so congratulations. And they're well aware of this, but their prize for third place was $1,000 that will be reinvested towards our STEAM program, and they are already on their next invention, so we'll hang this proudly, and we've already celebrated them, and our pizza party is next week, so we've got all that ready to roll. They've been celebrating for quite a while.
What time is that pizza party?
So, congrats again, guys.
I'm sorry, Memorial. Next up, Aldridge. Do we have our advisors, Mrs. Carney, Mrs. Gorski, and it looks like Principal Mr. Smith is here, and our students from Aldridge who placed first in their division, if they can come on up for their recognition.
All right, Mr. Greter spoke, so I'll speak. I know the ladies have a lot to say about this experience that the girls went through, it was fantastic. So, to echo what Mr. Greter said, we'd like to congratulate everybody who was involved in the contest, the numbers are astronomical, and to have four of the four Howell Township schools and the six finalists is just outstanding. The girls came up with a very innovative invention, it is expandable dress shoes for children. All right, so don't grab your phones and start ordering them yet on the Amazon, because it'll take a little while perhaps, because it's an awesome idea, an excellent idea for children as they grow, for the shoes to expand. They went through a lot, they involved Skechers in with their promotion, and thus the name Stretchers, and we're just so very proud of them, so I'd like to introduce them. Do we have their certificates? We have Madison Vigliotti, Casey Reinnecht, and Reese Urtell. And congratulations, thank you very much. And in my brevity, I forgot to mention that we have a first prize, $2,500 to Aldridge School, so thank you very much. Congratulations to all the winners.
Girls, turn around, show your shirts, back your shirts. If you haven't noticed already, they even have shirts made up with their design on the shirt. That's classy.
And now for our middle school division for Steam Tank, we had two teams from Middle School South that placed in the top three, so I'll ask, I think, Mr. Langenberg, and Dr. Henig is here, I think, or Mr., yep, Dr. Henig, Mr. Goodall, I think, is here as well, if you want to come up for Middle School South.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of recognizing two teams that placed within the top three from Howell Middle School South. The first team, Smarty T, well, actually, the third-place team, Smarty T, designed an innovation that brought recycling to a consumer level. They integrated a series of circuits and sensors that could detect every time you threw out something that didn't quite belong there, to help sort the trash before it winds up in the landfill. It was a very creative and innovative idea, and they were very well-prepared for their presentation, and did an outstanding job representing Howell to its finest. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize our third-place team, and when I call their name, I'd like them to come up and to get their certificate. Jamie Van Orton. Kaylee Hassett. And Skylar Starr. Middle School State Division for Steam Tank, Cell Cycle. This team designed an innovative application or app for your phone that gamifies the art Smarty T received this third-place prize, which is $1,000, to be reinvested into the of recycling, earning the user points, and over time rewarding them through credits Steam Tank production, whether it be in helping students provide resources for their inventions for stores and things of that nature. or innovations, or preparing through graphics or design or video cameras and those types This team had also the opportunity, just a few weeks ago to meet with, or just a week of things. So, congratulations. ago, to meet with Apple to continue working on their X code, the application software
What was it like performing and having to do the presentation in front of that
they used to design the app. To their credit, they spent a great deal of their time over this past summer working
many people at Atlantic City?
and developing this idea, so it's not just an idea that begins in one place and ends
You didn't show it.
several months later, but they have taken, both teams have taken the opportunity to invest in their own future, and they have, both teams have done an outstanding job, again, in representing Howell Township. So, at this time, I would like to recognize Cell Cycle. When I call your name, please come up for your certificate. Kate Lanzito. Cassidy Brennan. Kira Zimmer. And Samantha Mel. Cell Cycle was awarded the prize of $2,500 to add to our 1,000, so we have quite an abundance of resources to use for the up-and-coming Steam Tank as we prepare for the new season already.
Was there a point where you knew you had it, when you were doing a presentation, was there a moment where you said, "This is it, you got it"?
We didn't want to think anything.
Well said.
Great job.
So, we'd like to congratulate all of our Steam Tank finalists, and the first and third place in both elementary and middle school divisions is quite an accomplishment. I think we heard Ms. Engel say close to 600 teams made submissions and competed statewide, and there's a reason why, you know, we say Howell leads, and it's not without the great support of staff that brings kids to these stretch curriculum opportunities, and we're so proud of all the folks involved. We are equally as proud of the work we've done around sustainable, and with Sustainable NJ being a huge platform across the state, we are so proud to recognize that all 12 of our schools are bronze-level certified by Sustainable New Jersey. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Sanisak to tell you a little bit about the program and begin that recognition. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I was going to say that all 12 schools received, but that's already been said, so thank you very much. So, a couple weeks ago, Ms. Malley, Dr. Jeffrey, and I were privileged to join some of our administrators at a banquet where all of our schools were recognized for this great achievement. The Sustainable NJ platform allows for sustainability issues to be front and center with the students, the staff, and the district, to such a level that they reminded me that we shouldn't have the plastic water bottles at the dais, so we won't be doing that again, thank you very much. Last-minute plans. So, Sustainable Jersey for Schools is a certification program for public schools. There are some, 700 districts and 2,600 schools, yet only 300 districts and only 800 schools are certified, and Howell is 100% certified at the bronze level, all 12 schools. Sustainable Jersey for Schools, a program for pre-K through 12th grade, is voluntary, but achieving certification takes a lot of work and a lot of commitment and collaborative effort. Each school that is certified at the bronze level must submit documentation, and the documentation is rigorous, so thank you to all of you, to complete a balanced portfolio of the program's sustainability actions. All 12 of our schools were honored to be certified bronze through this rigorous program and rigorous requirements. These schools form a group, a part of a group of 108 schools that achieved the Sustainable Jersey Schools in 2019. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Malley and Dr. Jeffrey to join me in recognizing each of those schools. As I call the school, please, the team that accomplished this great task, come on down and receive the plaque and the... Yes, sir. And I have someone in my office who is instrumental, and Dr. Jeffrey just reminded me, pretty soon, I'm going to have to get her own door for her head to get, no, just kidding. So, Lindsey Treadle does a lot of work and assists the schools, and really coordinates a lot of the deadlines and all that paperwork, and we have recognized her. She did join us also at the banquet, so thank for reminding me of that, and everybody does a lot of work, but she keeps all of them in order. So, as we call the schools, come on down, the team that accomplished this task, we called, they called the green team, so each school has a green team, and they do a lot of hard work, and even tonight, you'll see some motions on the agenda for some donations that, although they're coming from the PTAs, they were spawned by the children's desire to have reusable bottle fill stations. You'll see one going to Memorial this evening and one going to Gribbling. So, it's a whole community effort, and it really is making a difference. So, without further ado, the green team, or the team that's here this evening, for Adelphia Elementary. And there's, I think, about 12 places on the plaque for the certification for each year, so we hope to see them all getting the little piece to go on the plaque each year. One each, or do you want them all, one each?
No, no, I'm asking you, it's okay.
Do you want one each or all together, sir?
One school is one community, let's do one.
Okay. If you could wait up here, starting with the As, you get to stand here the longest. Aldridge Elementary, I believe Mr. Smith is here with his team. Thank you to Ms. Palazzolo for her team from Adelphia. We're heavy on the As in the alphabet here.
Mr. Smith, do you want to say anything, or?
Ardina. Ardina, I see Dr. Pinnell and the Ardina team. And a strong team that it is. Greenville Elementary, Ms. Coco. She brought the whole school. I hope they carpooled. Oh, sorry.
No, you're just kidding, yeah, you're teasing us.
Gribbling Elementary, home of the Bulldogs. I saw Ms. Suarez and your team. Memorial Elementary, Mr. Greter gets to come up again. And Memorial is in their second year of bronze certification. Newberry Elementary, Dr. Quinn, I see you there, bring your team on up. Holy mackerel, running out of space here. The Southern End of Paradise, Mr. Borer, Ramtown Elementary. Yeah, we're going to get, we're going to get a picture moment out front, but... Taunton Elementary. Ms. Napoli and Company, come on up. And although the green teams are the administrators, we all know that the programs are with and for and benefiting the children, we just didn't have a big enough room for everybody to be here tonight. Mr. Farley in Middle School North. And as we say, last but not least, Dr. Henig in Middle School South. Great idea to get one picture, I don't know if we have a lens big enough. If everybody wants to get in front of the podium and take one nice picture, come on, we know how to do this. You can see what a big commitment it is and how many dedicated people we have to this cause.
All right, everybody stay there. Just stay there, you're good, don't worry, just part the sea again, Claire's going to walk through the middle, it'll all make sense in one second. As Claire's making her way, we want to, I just found out, it's Ms. Amato's birthday today, so happy birthday. We threw her a party, right? We invited the whole family. So, Ms. Engel's going to just quickly introduce our next recognition, which is a district-wide recognition, so I'm going to ask that you all who've played such a major role in this to stay here, and any other staff members or students that had a role in us obtaining our Future Ready Silver District with Distinction, come on up and join us. Ms. Engel, I think you're under there somewhere back there.
I am.
Go ahead.
So, we're good. Thank you. This year, our district was awarded the Future Ready New Jersey Silver District Distinction through the Future Ready New Jersey Certification Program. The Silver District Distinction is currently the highest tier, an accolade that a district can receive through this program. Howell is among four districts throughout the state of New Jersey that has earned this distinction. To reach it, we were required to undergo...
Everybody stay there. Just stay there. You're good. Don't worry. Just part to see again. Claire's gonna walk through the middle. It'll all make sense in one second. As Claire's making her way, we wanna, I just found out, it's Ms. Amato's birthday today, so happy birthday. We threw her a party, right? We invited the whole family. So, Ms. Engel's gonna just quickly introduce our next recognition, which is a, which is a district-wide recognition. So, I'm gonna ask that you all who've played such a major role in this to stay here, and any other staff members or students that had a role in us obtaining our future-ready Silver District with Distinction, come on up and join us. Ms. Engel, I think you're under there somewhere back there.
I am.
Go ahead.
So, we're good. Thank you. This year, our district was awarded the Future-Ready New Jersey Silver District Distinction through the Future-Ready New Jersey Certification Program. The Silver District Distinction is currently the highest tier, an accolade that a district can receive through this program. Howell is among four districts throughout the state of New Jersey that has earned this distinction. To reach it, we were required to undergo a very rigorous evaluation process, similar to the Sustainable New Jersey process. Some of the criteria included that all of our schools had to be Silver Tier certified. Each of the schools had to be actively participating in the awards committee program. They had to collaborate with other districts around the state to support them in their efforts of attaining bronze certification, and also provide exemplars, present at future-ready events, and share best practices, as well as invite other educators and leaders throughout the state of New Jersey to our school district to actually see how we achieved future-ready success. The Silver District Distinction requirements will be featured components of the Gold Tier District Certification, meaning that districts that were awarded this distinction will be well underway in earning the Gold Tier whenever it comes out. While accomplishments of this kind are certainly a source of great pride, we recognize that they only signify a journey that really will require continued commitment. Distinctions such as this are only possible due to the efforts of all of these individuals that are standing up here, as well as the Supportive Board of Education, Administration, Community, and the tireless work that our staff members provide as in making these learning environments for our students. So, at this time, I think we have a banner. Do we have a banner? There we go. There we go. So, we'll, yeah, let's, maybe we put in, here we go. There we go. There we go. Somebody will hold at least the banner. I think Mr. Miller and Dr. Lowe are out front, and they can give out the certificate to each of the principals. So, thank you, Adelphia, for your contributions to this Future-Ready Distinction. And if there's anybody from Adelphia in the audience or any of the schools that I call up that were on the Future-Ready Team, come on up and join the Sustainable Teams as well. Congratulations, Adelphia. Land of Pines. We'll go with South instead of North, because South is always last. Congratulations, everyone.
While they're working on getting this photo ready, one of the nice pieces of Future Ready is ability, and the piece of it is to share with other districts. Last year, I was fortunate enough to be in a panel and participate in a program of the NJIT. When somebody heard Claire's name mentioned, this woman stood up and from like the other side, after, "Oh, we need to talk, Randy, you helped us so much." And I don't even remember what district she was from, but it's part of what happens with the Future Ready program. It really is a matter of other districts sharing and helping districts advance in their, in their work. So, congratulations to all of you. Claire, thank you so much.
All right. Congratulations on Future Ready and Sustainable work. You guys are awesome, and you make a difference in this community, trust me. We're good. We're on to our next recognition now. So, as we shuffle in, I'll invite Mr. Fiore to remain up there and find his way to the podium, as this portion of our recognition will be dedicated to two of our school teams that won county championships. And at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Joe Fiore, so he may begin the recognition of our student athletes.
Thank you. At this time, if the field hockey team can line up and come on out. Before they get here, I would just like to say a couple of words. First of all, I'd like to thank the people that made this possible, starting with the Board of Education and Central Office. Without their commitment to our after-school programs, we wouldn't be able to have all of these programs and wonderful experiences, so let's give them a round of applause. If all of our student athletes that are being recognized tonight, if their parents can please stand up in the audience, all the parents of our student athletes, please stand up. If we can give them a round of applause. It's your countless hours of dedication to getting your children to all their activities that make this possible, so thank you. At this time, I'd like to talk about Mrs. Sullivan. I feel bad for her. Sorry, I'm a little loud. I feel bad for her because basically, this is her first year coaching field hockey for us, and she went undefeated and won the Monmouth County Championship, so let's give her a round of applause.
So, Joe, it's kinda welcome to the new normal, right?
That's exactly it. Now, that's the new standard. But Mrs. Sullivan is passionate, she works extremely hard, she's very knowledgeable, and I am very lucky that she came here to Middle School South and honored us by coaching. So, I'd like to thank you, and if we can give Mrs. Sullivan a round of applause, and I'll call her up to present to her team.
And the trophies are right here. Yes. Okay. Good evening. I just want to say I had an unbelievable season this year. Obviously, we won a championship, and that's not something that happens every day. Their hard work and dedication and determination really was astonishing this year, and I'm so proud of each and every one of you. So, congratulations, ladies. I'd like to start off by introducing the team with Jordan Rubman. Ruby Bork. Ruby. Kira McCown. Oh, sorry. Riley Brennan. Kealan Gray. Emma DePeppo. Madison Nagy. Bryn Mahoney. Laura Stevens. Mia Nagy. Olivia Morales. Taylor Carlson. Ava Nagy. Oh, I'm sorry.
How many Nagys are there?
Sarah Nice. Kim Edmonds. Hadley Delisanti. Kylie Gallardo. And Alyssa Morales. Congratulations again, ladies. Well done.
Congratulations. I think that's our first-ever field hockey. I don't want to misquote, but I think it's our first-ever, right? Come on up for a photo, young ladies.
Huddle around the podium.
Who's the goalie?
This is, this is yours.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I will. Thank you.
Here, ladies. In the front. There you go.
At this time, I would like to call up the Middle School North's 6th, 7th grade girl At this time, I would like to talk about Ms. Camilleri, who has been coaching probably longer than I've been here in the district, because she's done such a great job. I came on, I was fortunate to have her as a coach. She's amazing. Not only does she develop the girls in their soccer skills, but she develops them in their social, emotional abilities. And she's always caring and compassionate. I know that the girl soccer teams at Middle School North, a lot of times, they get a little something extra, like Gatorades or treats on the sideline, but that's because of their love and compassion for your children and their student athletes. So, Ms. Camilleri, if you can come up and present to your team, I would appreciate it.
Yes. Okay, so I'd like to start by saying that this team is kind of known as the comeback team. Last year, we had a little bit of a different situation, and we ended up having a full 6th grade team last year, which was really difficult because we were the youngest team in the division. This year, they came back bigger and stronger, they took second place in the division, and took championships. They beat the only team to beat Wall, who was undefeated the entire season. So, they're not only a very, very talented group, but as you can see, they are literally the funniest kids I've ever had on a soccer team. They will keep you entertained the entire time that they are playing soccer. So, I will call them up one at a time. First one is Bella Ancevino. She found it. Brenna Kaplan. Sophia Schwark. She did that after my game. That was not during my game, just so you know. Gabby Snowden. And I also want to acknowledge that during the championship game, Gabby Snowden won the MVP Player of the Year. Lily Ridgie is not here tonight, so next we have Sophia Woodford. Sophia's known as the quiet one on the team. No. Katie Bazinski. Leah Rotledge. Haley Alonso. Issa Suarez. Gabby Bryce. Kira's here, she's right here. Kira Mullin, who we stole from South, just so you know. Carly Lavici. And Bella Rose Marino. So, again, I could not be more proud of this team. They're unbelievable on and off the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more round of applause for our 6th, 7th Middle School North soccer team. Way to go, young ladies. Thank you, Mr. Fiore. And with that, that concludes our recognition. I'm gonna turn it back over to Mr. Sanisak.
At this time, as the board returns to the dais, we are in need of an executive session. The items for executive session this evening will be the Hib report, personnel, and a litigation settlement update. Please note the motion printed in the agenda for the executive session this evening. If we have a mover and a seconder, we are going to executive session, sir.
Moved.
Second.
The board is in executive session. Thank you. Ministers take their place back at the dais. The board is back in session.
Mr. Sanisak, can we turn the heat on? It's a little chilly out here.
We just discussed that. In our newness here, we don't have control of that yet, so...
Where are you going?
We're assuming that the large crowd triggers the CO2, which makes the air come in, and now, you got it, Bruce?
He's on it.
All right, Mr. Harvey, thank you. The board is back from executive session. May we take the minutes, sir?
Please.
Do you have a mover and a second?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jeffrey, second by Mr. Miller. May I take them around, sir?
Please.
Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Garman.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Ms. Malley.
Yes.
Ms. Mangano.
Yes.
Ms. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
I was not here, so I will abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Yes.
The motions are approved. Eight votes in favor with one abstention noted for the record. The correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the board, Mr. Bon Giovanni, your comments, sir.
I kind of said it earlier, but it is exciting being in a new building for the first time. It's certainly a little bit different for us. It seems like you're much further away than we're used to, so that's gonna take some getting used to also, as we do see you. So, we're excited about being here, though. We think it's gonna be a really wonderful experience for us here. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Isola.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. It is now time for the superintendent's report. Superintendent School, Mr. Isola, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sanisak. We'll try to move through this tonight. It was such an exciting evening to take the opportunity to recognize our students and school communities for the wonderful accomplishments. It is those types of moments that I believe separate us and make us one of the finest school districts in the state of New Jersey. So, thank you all for your patience during that. It is important to do so. Just a couple of notes here that I think are certainly worthy for our So, A1 will allow us to conduct our first reorg meeting of the new year on January 2nd. That is compliant with the requirement that says we need to complete that meeting by the first week. Throughout this school, throughout the school district and in all 12 schools, there's been a wonderful outpouring of support for our veterans. There's been assemblies, there's been programs, and it's such a source of pride for our school district to the extent in which we do so. You saw the Twitter feed earlier this morning, earlier this evening, celebrating and taking notice of all the wonderful programs that happen throughout our 12 schools. So, thank you to all the folks in our school buildings, to not only honoring veterans, but certainly emphasizing the important role that veterans have played in this country's history. It is American Ed Week. We've had our schools filled with community members and parents visiting the schools, and our schools have opened their doors in a very safe manner, I might add, to welcome our community in and get a glimpse of what's happening and be part of the everyday school life. So, I want to thank our school leaders and school educators for being so, you know, warm and welcoming to our community. Middle School North and Middle School South, students, about, up to 60, I think it was about 50-something students participated with our partners in the Freehold Regional High School District at Howell High School with Fearlessly Girl Program. This was a program that was supported by Howell's, once Howell's, very own Bonnie Bernstein, who is now, I think, with ESPN and a sportscaster. So, she provided funding for this program. We had young ladies from both middle schools visit at Howell High School and work with high school students on a program for character ed and supporting girls who are going, you know, through the adolescence and the teen years. It was a really well-received program, and I'm looking forward to receiving a full update from our school leadership during that. We are also very excited to be announcing that we have, January 21st will be our parent institute that we're going to be doing, we hope to be doing two of them a year, one in the fall, one in the winter-spring. So, this will be our first one. We'll kick it off with a general session for Dylan's Wingmen, Wings of Hope. It should be a really great program. Ian Hockley will do a presentation to build a... He'll be working with the students during the day, and in the evening for the parents, talking about the importance of building schools that have a culture of acceptance and supporting each other. You know, if every child just has someone to partner with and to take, you know, go through a school day with, they're better likely to be successful. So, we're looking forward to hearing from him. And then, following his presentation, we'll have breakout presentations for topics from wellness and SEL to curriculum areas. We're in the process of formulating that program, and we'll be sharing that information out with our community. We hope to pack the house at Middle School North and partner with our parents, because we know when we partner and educate our community about what's happening with their children, our students, we are better for that, and our kids have better outcomes. So, looking forward for that. HDF Breakfast with Sanner is on the 8th of December at the Howell Applebee's on Route 9, I guess right here. Now, I'm pointing like we're not here. We're on Route 9. So, that, you know, we hope that the foundation gets great support for that. In a moment, we're going to hear from our nursing, and Lynn Donahue on her report, but I want to finish all this, clear the table before that. In front of you, you should have the suspension report for this month, for the October suspensions. There were 13 school suspensions. That is there for your review. And then, one important topic that took place earlier in November was the, well, it was Election Day, and certainly there was school board elections here. As you all know, we have two boards that Howell residents sit on, the K8, which is assembled here this evening, and the Freehold High School Regional School District. Howell also has a seat there. Mark Parisi ran unopposed and obviously won that, and will be joining the Freehold Regional High School District. We wish Mr. Parisi well and hope he represents Howell Township's voice in the regional. I'm sure he'll do a great job. There was also the referendum for the Freehold High School Regional District. Unfortunately, in my opinion, that was defeated. We're waiting to hear from our partners at the Regional School District, the high schools, to find out what that impact means. Unfortunately, they had a lot of funding for security upgrades, impediments of the buildings and the athletic facilities. I think there was an auditorium in there, if I remember correctly. So, there was a lot of support that was needed throughout their buildings, and unfortunately, that was defeated. So, Dr. Sampson at the Regional High School District will have to be creative in figuring out how that goes, if whether or not they'll be going out for another vote or not, we'll see. But as we learn more from our fine partners at the Regional High School District, we'll certainly keep the community informed. And then, we had an election here in Howell Township, as you know, for our Board of Education. There were four candidates, and there were obviously three seats, which is the annual rotation of seats that come up. And I would like to congratulate Mr. Bonjavani and Ms. Mangano for being reelected to another three-year terms. We'll give them a... And then, Joe Tate actually won the third seat, and Mr. German also was on the ballot, and Mr. Tate actually had enough votes to be, you know, representative of that. He'll be taking the board. However, and I'm stumbling a little bit, because it's a little awkward, however, I've had conversations with Mr. Tate, and I have in writing, that due to some professional obligations, he'll be unable to take the seat. So, that means come January 2nd now, we will have a vacancy to fill. So, we work closely with our Monmouth County Executive Superintendent and the state office, and what we... Because this is a unique situation. It's not as if a seated board member moved out of town and had to resign, or whatever may have happened. This was due to an election. Somebody had enough votes to gain a seat on the board, but unfortunately for Mr. Tate, he's unable to do that. So, therefore, the board is now charged with making an appointment. So, the board will be advertising, so that it is a very open process. I believe we will be asking for direction this evening from the board to post that advertisement tomorrow. And at the December meeting, I think it will stay open till the final week in November, or actually into the first week of December, Mr. Sanisak.
December 5th.
December 5th. The posting will close. And at the December 11th meeting, right here in this room, candidates will be interviewed from the podium, and then the board will have the opportunity to go into executive session and deliberate on that process. And we are hopeful that that will yield us a recommendation for appointment, so that on the 2nd of January, we'll be able to have a nine-member board seated. Just some facts about that. The board, the person who ends up appointed, as I mentioned, Mr. Bonjavani and Ms. Mangano have been elected to a three-year seat, which is the normal process for a nine-person board. The person who is appointed will complete a one-year term, and then, if he or she would want to run again, would need to run for the two-year remaining seat next November. So, next November, this board will have the typical three-year, three three-year terms and one two-year terms. So, a little bit of a curveball, but I want to be very clear to our community that Mr. Tate has been extremely respectful and apologetic for the situation that he found, where his commitments are not going to allow him to participate, but he was very complimentary of the board's work and was looking forward to joining this great team, but unfortunately cannot do so. But wished the board well and wanted them, he wanted me to know right away, so that the board then can move in a direction to get reorganized as quickly as possible. So, we thank him for his openness about that. And with that, I believe my report is concluded. I guess I'll just ask for, Mr. Bonjavani, if we do have direction to advertise tomorrow morning and start that process.
Please. If we do advertise tomorrow, that would give us two weeks in order to receive any letters. If we receive them by, I believe we said, the 4th or the 5th, that would then also give a week for the board to receive any letters that we receive, so that we have time to look them over, deliberate at the next December meeting, make the decision at night, and be able to appoint the same day as the other two of us take our seats.
Very well, sir. Thank you. With this, I'll ask Ms. Fernandez to introduce the nursing report that Ms. Donahue and her army of nurses that are here to support her, who do an amazing job every day in our schools, every single day, so that we can make sure we give the update to the board and the community.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Isola. I'd like to turn this evening over to Mrs. Donahue, our lead nurse. She will be presenting to you this evening our Howell Township District Nursing Services Plan. Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Thank you, Mrs. Fernandez. And good evening, members of the Board of Education. Mr. Isola, Mr. Preston, Mrs. Fernandez, colleagues, and community members. Can I guess this one? Yes. Okay. The goal of this evening's presentation is to present our annual nursing district services plan. And that plan is actually developed each year based on an individual building assessment that each nurse does. At the end of the year, I put that assessment together, over the summer, gather all the statistics, and it's those statistics that we use to present to the board, and then that, those plans, individual building assessments, become the nursing services plan that is then presented to the board for their approval. Our staffing plan has remained unchanged. We have our supervisor, vice principal supervisor, that is Mrs. Doyle, who is on maternity leave currently. So, Mrs. Terry Clooney is our current supervisor. We have the head nurse stipend position, which is mine. We have one certified school nurse in each of our buildings. We have four part-time registered nurses that work under the supervision of our certified nurses. Two of those RNs are permanently assigned to each of our middle schools daily, and to assist with our elementary schools, and they all help provide for nursing coverage for our after-school activities, our clubs, and our sports. The health services provided to our students and staff are extensive. We have over 2,000 students with medical involvement throughout the district. Our offices saw over 100,000 visits last year, with the majority of those at our middle schools. As you can see, numerous medications were delivered, were administered to our students. Our middle school nurses reviewed over 1,000 sports physicals each sports season. They review and update medical updates. Our nurses complete accident reports as required, workman's compensation. We listed 911 services when needed, so certainly very active services that are provided. We assist in meeting the needs of our students with chronic medical conditions. Asthma is one of the leading common diseases in children. Over 8 million children have asthma nationally. I believe over 160,000 in the state of New Jersey. I was just at a conference on asthma on Monday evening. And we have almost 500 students with asthma in our district. Each student who has an order for an inhaler or a nebulizer has a state-mandated asthma treatment plan that we follow up and we receive from the physicians. We then work together with parents. We create emergency plans and individual health plans. We distribute our emergency plans to staff, so that they're aware of the things that trigger asthma, and those triggers can be our individual to students. They could be the weather, they could be a food allergy, they could be exercise, and knowing, so that the staff has, you know, an understanding of those triggers for our students. We also see a number of students with diabetes, and the law requires education of all staff personnel on the care and signs and symptoms of diabetes. We develop healthcare plans and emergency care plans, make accommodations for our students, not only during the school day, but during school trips and after-school activities, as well as train delegates who can administer glucagon in the absence of the nurse. And glucagon is a medication that is administered to someone who is severely hypoglycemic, where they are unresponsive. Glucagon reverses those symptoms, and it is an emergency, lifesaving medication. Food allergies continue to be a health concern for many of our students. As you can see, over 500 students district-wide have food allergies, with the most common being the tree nuts and the soy, fish and peanuts, dairy, wheat, and they do provide a challenge throughout the district. We help make accommodations for those students by helping them make healthy and safe food choices. We remind the students constantly about the importance of not sharing food, knowing what you're eating, knowing if you brought it from home, that you're eating safe foods. We can help create allergy-aware classrooms and tables in the cafeteria when needed. We teach staff about food allergies, work with our students and our parents to create emergency plans and health plans, bus emergency plans, so again, our students are safe, not only during the school day, but during, if they stay for after-school. We train epinephrine delegates who can administer epinephrine in our absence, or if we're not immediately available, as well as administering medications as needed. The emergency administration of epinephrine is the first line of treatment for anaphylaxis. And district-wide, we had over 200 students who had epinephrine, or what we commonly call EpiPens, in school last year. And our nurses provided over 800 student-specific trainings. So, we specifically would train a teacher, a coach, who could administer in our absences. They need, by the law, you can only give, a delegate can only give the epinephrine if they've been student-specific trained. So, we provide those trainings to, again, keep our children safe. The district, Dr. Muley, our new school physician, provides us with a standing order for epinephrine, so that permits us to train a delegate, and also for ourselves, to administer epinephrine in a situation where there's anaphylaxis, where maybe there wasn't a known history of it, or we hadn't received all those medications as of yet, again, for the safety of the students. And that is, you know, a new law. We train, again, those delegates who can administer that epinephrine also. I talked a little bit about emergency plans. So, throughout the course of last year, the nurses compiled over 450 student emergency plans, numerous individual health plans, and then again, bus emergency plans that are distributed to transportation. And while we're doing all that, we also do our mandated health screenings. So, we take, we do blood pressures, we do hearing, we do our vision, our scoliosis screenings, as well as height and weight on all the students. Once we've done those screenings, we evaluate them and then send referrals if needed. Again, with most of our referrals being in vision. We've been fortunate enough to have the Spot Screener on loan from the Lions Club, and that allows an electronic screening of especially our very young preschool population and our special needs population. So, we are very fortunate that they loan that to us every year. It does make those screenings much easier. Additional responsibilities that take place in some of our offices are catheterizations, hearing aid checks, substance abuse screenings, assisting with removal and applying of scoliosis braces, orthopedic injuries, helping students with orthopedic injuries, and assisting with cardiac shield placement, sometimes before physical education, especially at the middle school. The educational impact that we provide is vast. Education occurs with every interaction with our students, whether it be hand washing, cough etiquette, the proper use of inhalers with and without spacers, physical and emotional health, and really, our education supports our student's success by helping keep our students safe, ready to learn, and in the classroom. We help, obviously, reduce the spread of diseases, obviously, without trying to reduce lost sick times, so our kids, again, are in school and ready to learn. We help provide student education programs in our buildings, everything from coordinating health walks, dental presentations, helmet presentations, presentations provided, helped provided by Jersey Shore, from nutrition, safety, and fitness. And here we have a couple pictures of the... school. The educational impact that we provide is vast. Education occurs with every interaction with our students, whether it be hand washing, cough etiquette, the proper use of inhalers with and without spacers, physical and emotional health, and really, our education supports our student's success by helping keep keeping our students safe, ready to learn, and in the classroom. We help obviously reduce the spread of diseases, obviously with trying to reduce lost sick times, so our kids, again, are in school and ready to learn. We help provide student education programs in our buildings, everything from coordinating health walks, dental presentations, helmet presentations, presentations provided, helped provided by Jersey Shore, from nutrition, safety, and fitness. And here we have a couple pictures of those presentations that were done throughout the year. With staff, we do a lot of teaching with our staff, severe allergies reactions in school, diabetes, asthma, blood-borne pathogens. We conduct cardiac response drills with our cardiac response teams. We, again, do our EpiPen training and our glucagon training, and we help really spread the word about preventing germs with hand washing and good cough etiquette. And just so you know, December, the first week of December, is National Hand Washing Awareness Week, so you may see more about that coming up on our webpages, just that week, but that's the, that's the most important one. And again, we support the school effort. We help coordinate wearing red for women's heart, monitoring blood pressures for staff, assisting with jump rope for heart, a lot of breast cancer awareness. We help coordinate for rare genes. We support our PTAs and our PTO. Our, oh, Mrs. Mistowski has, supports our pipe band visits on Veterans Day and St. Patrick's Day. Mrs. Penn down at Middle School South has conducted the Biggest Loser event, as well as organizing a Keep the Change Foundation, our fundraiser for students. And I had called her, I said, "What exactly was that?" And she said, "Well, we had a jar in the office, and when people had loose change, they threw their staff members through their loose change in the jar, and we were able to use that." We actually brought a yearbook for one of the needy students, so it was a great way this, everyone wants to get rid of their change, and it was a great little effort that she had put together. Again, just some of our things that we've done throughout the year. In our school community, we help organize our Thanksgiving and holiday programs, and we're all very busy this week and next week doing Thanksgiving baskets for many of the families and needs in our building. In the beginning of the year, we help coordinate school supplies and backpacks, and we actually, you know, revisit that at the winter holidays and try to replenish some of those supplies that they might need, that they might not have the ability to do in the wintertime, help distribute Halloween costumes, assist with blood drives, and we do assist the Lions Club also by collecting glasses. We utilize technology in our health offices through Power School, through Schoology. We all have a webpage, you can check us all out, on our district, on our building websites. We utilize Excel for our monthly report, for our supply ordering, and throughout doing a lot of our other reports also. Again, our Spot Screener and diabetic monitoring is also, you know, very technology-based now in most of our schools. We are keeping ahead of the curve. Our nurses develop their professional development growth plans to be in line with the district goals. All of our certified school nurses last year attended the Lifelines Training, which was the suicide prevention training. All of our nurses attended NARCAN training last year. We work in our professional learning communities to share and collaborate. Each of our nurses, again, has their own health office webpage that, again, you can go and take a look at, and we are currently training for the implementation of SNAP, which is going to be the electronic health record maintenance systems in our offices, so we're doing a lot of training with that this school year. And I would like to recognize our district nurses and any of them who are here. Please stand. Yay! Obviously, they, I present the presentation, but it's all their work, so it's really just, I compile it all, but I am very privileged to work with each and every one of them. And I just want to share with you a couple of things that our students have said about their nurses. The nurses at Aldridge are grateful for Mrs. Diamond because she always makes them feel better. Another, some of our other students have said they're thankful. "Thank you for helping us. You always help us when we are hurt or sick. You are the helper of the school." And another student said, "Thank you for taking care of the school. I really look up to you." So those are things that really make our day. I would also like to recognize Mrs. Fallon, our retiree from last year. Stand up, Mrs. Fallon. Truly a mentor through our district and a leader, and she is dearly missed, but I know she's with us in heart every day. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Doyle, who, again, could not be with us tonight, Mrs. Clooney, Mrs. Fernandez, and Dr. Muley, and of course, the Board of Education. We do thank you for all your support, and together, we do make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donahue. Wonderful job, and thank you, all the nurses, whether they're here or not. You all play such an important role in our school community, and I know that you are making a difference every day, and certainly, I know the board feels the same, and we just want to extend our gratitude. After all, it is the month of gratitude, right? So we are certainly grateful for all of you.
I'd like to ask any members of the board if they have any comments, questions?
I know I'm a numbers person. Those numbers.
No, just honestly, our nurses are lifeline. He would not get through a day without her, so we can't be more appreciative of everything than all of you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. You know, many people think that the nurses just sit there and give out Band-Aids and stuff like that, and, you know, you show that it's, it's a lot of work that yous are actually doing, and you do a lot every single day for our students, so thank you for everything that you do. I know when my daughter was in the district, quite a few times, the nurses did excellent work for her when she went to the nurse, so thank you for everything that yous do every day.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to also thank you guys for all you do. I know my children miss Nurse Achara. They moved up to middle school, so when they're not feeling good, they're like, "We miss Nurse Achara." So, you know, that shows how important the nurses are for the schools.
Thank you.
And the same as, I've obviously children in districts as well, echo the same as my colleagues up here, that thank you guys for all the work you do. I always get very nervous.
When we call, right?
When you call, so it's not a phone call that I look forward to, but when...
No one does. No one actually hears my phone.
But when the time comes, obviously, it's not easy for any of our, any child to get sick in the middle of the day. Sometimes it takes you a little courage for them even to speak up, you know, to go to the nurse's office, so thanks for making it much easier for them when they don't feel well.
Thank you.
I just have to counter one thing. The children in middle school that I know actually love to go to the nurse's office because it's such a wonderful place, and it's so calming and peaceful, and sometimes they just go there to get away from the stresses of their day. So in that respect, too, they're, the nurses are providing an amazing service, so thank you all very much.
Ms. Donahue, some, some of the numbers are just absolutely frightening, and I can't, I can't imagine how much of the day is spent doing the asthma treatments, the diabetes treatment, just all the other things. But one of the slides that you put up, I've been in the schools when there have been different parties going on for different reasons. So in terms of the allergy-free rooms, how well does that work? How well do, does the message get out to the parents in terms of you can bring this, you can't bring that?
It's getting better. You know, we really do, at Newbury this year, we really kind of, really kind of focused on the parents', you know, specific foods. And again, we're talking allergy-aware signs, because you really can't make a guarantee that something is nut-free. You know, you're really kind of giving everyone a false sense of security, so it's really allergy-aware, but it's hard. It's definitely hard, because I think everyone's still, everyone still thinks a party has to have food. We all do, and so they all want a lot of food in there, and really, you know, it's hard for that child who can't have it, so you want to make sure that everybody's safe in the room. So the teachers really have to work with us and our administration, you know, it's a huge group effort.
Mr. Gorman?
Can I answer that?
Please.
Hi. I'm the nurse at Ramtown. I'd just like to add, what we do to Ramtown is, well, in all our schools, we also try to have a class mom to work with the teacher as well, and we get a list of anything that they want to have for the party ahead of time, a list of ingredients. They're sent home to the parents to review and to sign off on that they agree that that child can have that. If they're not in agreement with that, I always suggest that they bring some snacks and leave them in our rooms, but bring two different ones so that your child has a choice of which snack they want, because it is a lot about the choice, I find. You know, if they're told that you, they can only have this, they're, they're not happy. But if you give them the opportunity to pick one, they're more willing and receptive to, okay, well, then they don't mind that they, they're not having what is in the room.
I'm the same way at home.
Yeah, yeah, so, but yes, I do. I'm a firm believer in that, because a lot of, a lot of the things you don't even know nowadays, like a bag, there was a bag of spinach, for example, that on the back of it that I had bought, and it said it processed in a place where nuts were. Now, who would think a bag of spinach, right? You would think that, that... What? No. But isn't, and you would never think, I don't know, I just never would have thought spinach, but I found that interesting. So you really, really have to be careful nowadays.
And some foods are more challenging than others. I have a student right now with soybean. How many things have soybean?
I don't think those people would even assume to check for something like spinach. You can check the packaging for something like that, but it reminds us that, hmm, you have to really check everything out.
Yes, and so, I mean, technology has helped us in the fact that teachers and the class parents can take pictures of labels, and now you can email those labels home, and they can see them, they can blow it up and look at it, so that has actually been a huge advantage for us, but it is a huge challenge, especially, like I said, the nuts, when they stick out there are easy. It's those ones that you don't think are hard.
Mr. Gorman, but then I have something else. Go ahead.
Thank you for all that you do. Obviously, we talk about physical wellness, but as you know, we're emphasizing now more and more the importance of social and emotional wellness, and I'm just wondering, obviously, you could probably give an hour of talk on this, but just in a short synopsis, if you can give us some idea of your work in that area for the students.
We see a lot of students with anxiety, so a lot of them, and you can tell when they come at the same time of the day. Oftentimes, you'll know, ooh, is this math time, or is this, you know, a time where a little bit more anxious, or maybe they're anxious about going out to recess because they don't necessarily, you know, want that unstructured time, or, you know, just might be something going on, a presentation. I had a student, you know, she was diaphoretic, and I said, "What do you have going on this afternoon?" She was giving a speech, and she was, you know, petrified, really. So I have an actual acronym now called WOW, so it's, you know, water, oxygen, and wheat. So we said, "Okay, let's do our WOW." You know, let's sit there and kind of talk about this. Has it been things online, too? You know, you go through your five senses, five things you can see, four things that you can taste in the room. Let's talk about different things. I do the ocean all the time. Oh, think about the ocean, think about the waves, so we, you know, a lot of visual kind of things, but we do see a lot of anxiety in the kids and nervousness, and sometimes they don't, stomach aches are a lot of times, you know, they just don't know. Their physical symptoms, you say, "I know what you're feeling is, is real. I know you have a stomach ache, I know you have a headache, but let's try to figure out really kind of what's going on." So there is a lot. We do a lot of mom stuff, too. I say the kids, I was a mom before I was even a nurse, so...
I see Mrs. Brennan raising her hand.
Yes, I just want to say...
Come to the mic.
Come, come. Come, come.
Come to the mic.
Just wanted to say with that, we work so collaboratively with our administration and with our guidance counselor for these situations, because at no time do you want to ever have a child think that they're not important, but because of our office, you don't know who's coming in, and you don't have a lot of privacy, so you can delegate and call our VP, our, our, our principal, our guidance counselor. I mean, they are worth their weight in gold, so we work as a team, because it is so important. I'm in a K-2 building, and the students have anxiety. Somebody today, and it was a substitute who, a teacher who actually recognized it, the child was the leader for the day, and she was doing everything really well, and then all of a sudden, she had a lead in speaking, and all of a sudden, her chest hurt, you know, and she came to see me, and we worked it out that, you know, it was probably a little nervous, and we worked the WOW, even though I didn't use it. I didn't use it in those words, but it was like the water, breathe, and just, you know, basically like that, but it's such a team effort.
Trust me, I am not trying to give any more work based on what I just said about the numbers, but you heard it mentioned earlier tonight about the parent academy that's going to be developed, and what I would encourage you as a, as a group, if you do think at some point that there's something that you would like to see included in the parent academy, specifically for the community some evening, whether it's allergies, whether it's stress, whatever, I certainly encourage you to talk to Mr. Isola about doing that. January may be a little bit tough, it's, that's not giving you a lot of time, but if we're going to do that twice a year, I'd certainly think that you probably have something that you would like to present.
Yeah, definitely.
And I'm not trying to make more work for you, I'm just saying that...
I got a good team behind me. I know who I can reach.
I just did.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn. And then, Mr. Sanders, thank you so much for, for all the information, and like I said a moment ago, and all that you do, it's, I think it's one of the board's favorite reports each year, so, so thanks for that. And before I conclude, or as I conclude, just a quick update on, on the proposed calendar for the next school year. While it's in its final stages of planning, I did want to share with the board some of the highlights of where we're at. I'm anticipating by the end of this week to have it out to all the groups, and maybe even as early as tomorrow, but just real quickly, so that there's an understanding, Labor Day will be the latest it possibly can be. It will be September 7th. That will allow us to get in as a staff for three days prior to Labor Day, be off the Friday and the Monday of Labor Day weekend, and on Tuesday, the, the 8th, we'll welcome students to a school district that is very well-prepared due to the upfront time. Winter break is, is looking like it will start on the 24th and run through, I think the first falls on a Friday, so then we'll come back on the 4th, so you'll have a few extra days to recover from the winter break and the winter holidays, including New Year's. So, so that, I think, plays out well. The spring break is looking like it'll begin at the end of March, the 27th would be the first day, and it would run through this, the proposal of the calendar that I think I'll be sharing out will include Easter Monday, I think is what folks call that. I'm not convinced it's a holiday, but whenever I put out a calendar that doesn't have it, I hear loud and clear that in Howell Township, apparently, it's a holiday, so who am I to question that? So this break would then, for spring, would conclude on the Monday following Easter, and that spring break would conclude on the 5th. The tentative graduation will be designed around the, the end of the school year. With the way this is shaping up, and staff is, you know, certainly going to have a voice as it gets shared, and I absolutely solicit feedback from the board, from the PTA, PTO Presidents' Council, from academic council, and, and who collects it, from the entire staff, so there's lots of voice that goes into this calendar, and whenever you have that much input, there's obviously a divide in, in what folks want. But what, this calendar that we look like we're going to be sharing out, it would conclude on the last day, would be Friday, June 18th for students. Staff would then come back Monday, which is not the greatest break in the calendar, I get it, but they'd come back on that 20, I think it's the 21st, do a wrap-up day, some, some articulation, close up their classrooms, and then be out also pretty early. So it's an early end to the school year. Obviously, that last day, that one day that we would come back for, which would be June 21st, it also gives us, we build in two snow days, but that's basically a third day, because if we have to make up, we're already scheduled to be here as a staff, so it's not adding on to your staff calendar, it's just the kids would have to come back, so it does kind of build in a, a, a nice opportunity there, should we have a tough winter, and we are hoping that is not the case. And then, so the last day staff would be 21st, and as I said, June 18th for students. Freehold Regional High School District is June 24th, that's in stone, so we operate around that. We can't graduate on, well, we could. We do not graduate on the same day, out of respect for our community. We have flexibility as a K-8, they kind of are required to do it at a certain time and point there, so, so keep an eye on your email. You should be receiving the mocked-up version of that, and I'm sure you'll all, for our staff that's here, be receiving that from, from, I think Lois puts it out as the Chair of Academic Council, Lois Mueller. So, but I look forward to feedback. I look forward to all the compliments for doing such a good job and designing a, a meaningful calendar that allows us to conduct great educational opportunities for our students, and, and the truth of the matter is, I do look forward to that. I'm kind of joking a little bit, only a little bit, because we do want a calendar that meets the needs of our community, so that's how you do that, by getting voice. And then finally, we are in the process of formulating our first-ever, in my recall, which isn't that long, only, only a decade and a half, our first-ever advisory, student advisory committee to the superintendent, and for, so we'll have about 15 to 20 middle school students that I'll meet with on a regular basis to hear student voice and to, to gauge things, you know, from, from student perspective. You know, I spent most of my adult life in middle schools, I think I know it pretty well. I never really sat down with just a panel of kids and got feedback. I never really sat down with just a panel of kids and got feedback on how that, that looks to them. You know, we go to seminars, and we get smart about things, and we, we do a good job by no, by, you know, indisputable, we do a good job. But at the end of the day, I think when we put student voice coupled with our knowledge base, I think we can even get to the next level. And I know that Mr. Farley and at Middle School North and Dr. Hannick at South are excited to partner with me on this work. So we'll be, that committee will be inclusive of, you know, a, a cross-section of students from both schools, and we'll see how it goes. I'm planning on meeting three to four times annually and providing feedback to the schools on that. By no means does this suggest that students are going to run the school. We have rules. We have decorum and what we, we have high expectations. But I think when we add student voice, as we're doing with our educational work and the student agency and all that, I think we're just going to be that much richer of a community and a stronger culture for students and staff. So I'm excited about this work. I wanted to share it with you this evening. And with that, sir, my report is concluded, unless there's questions.
Thank you. It is now time for the first public comment, but before that, since I heard all the board members thank the nurses, I think it's important that I thank Nurse Fallon for taking care of my kids a little while ago, though. So thank you, Sharon. May I do the first public comment, sir? Whereas the Howell Township Board of Education determines that the comments from the public portion may last 45 minutes, and those comments will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 154.1. The officer of respect, the timing, decorum will be the President of the Board, Mr. Bonjavani. May the floor be open to accept comments from the public.
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, sir, may the floor be closed?
Sure.
It is now time for committee updates and liaison reports, sir.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Starting from my left, Mr. Thor, Mr., uh, anything?
No, I have nothing to report.
Mr. Thor.
Thanks.
Community interaction met on November 18th, just two days ago before. I'll give a very quick synopsis, because it was, it was a very briefing meeting compared to some of ours. From a community standpoint, it's heat on a consent agenda. I'd like to thank, as behalf of our committee and the board, Memorial Elementary, Middle School North, and Gribling, the three PTAs that combined have donated, I think, I looked at it, it was about $6,000 in terms of donations from those three PTAs, and that's just fantastic. So from a community standpoint, you know, thank you to all three of them for, for that generosity. And just like to say that one of the things from our committee over the last couple of years was the live stream, and I wanted to see what the difference was tonight versus when we were in Middle School North, and I think it's very well done. So Ms. Angle, thank you very much. It, it looks, I don't know if you're watching on the big screen here, I'm looking at it on my, on my MacBook a moment ago, and it looks very good, where you're able to see everybody, both the audience, us up here, and the speakers. So anybody trying to watch at home now, if they are indeed doing that, can really get a, a great picture of what is happening. We met on Monday. It was a rather brief meeting, again, as compared to some others. We had a district update for Mr. Isola, and basically just talking about a number of the items we had tonight, including the steam tank and the success that they've had, and the Veterans Day activities that had taken place the prior week, along with the student advisory council that Mr. Isola was discussing a moment ago. Talked about a few upcoming events involving HTF, including the one on December 8th. Again, for those watching, December 8th, Breakfast with Santa at the Applebee's in Howell at 8:00 a.m., 8 to 10:00 a.m. And discussed the fact that the board meeting will move from January 7th, 2020, to January 2nd. Election results, which have been covered tonight, were discussed at the meeting. The initial discussion on the district calendar, obviously, that is something that a lot of families are very interested in, especially when they have children that are in two different districts, both the K-8 and the regional. There was a discussion on Dylan's Wing of Change, which I believe we will be discussing later this evening, if I read the agenda correctly. And that will, they discussed that Middle School North will have a presentation on January 21st, Middle School South on January 22nd, and then this program. Mr. Ian Hockley, who is a parent of a child that was killed in the Sandy Hook tragedy, will be speaking to parents on January 21st at Middle School North at 6:00 p.m. The Parent Institute will also meet that evening from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Middle School North. And those listening, Mr. Hockley, will have the opportunity to attend breakout sessions geared towards their children's educational, social, and emotional needs. Mr. Hallroy, who's the Vice Principal at Newberry School, and he oversees the Project Goal Program, discussed the thought leader program. And then the final two topics. First of all, just a follow-up on the administrative move to this facility and the fact that not only will the board offices be here, and I think the move will be finalized as soon as March. Mr. Sanisak?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. But also the fact that we will now be holding our meetings here, and I think, I think so far, so good. And then the last item was just a popular topic going on in state government right now, and obviously legislative advocacy, I'm sure, has been discussed at some point, which is district consolidation, which is being discussed in Trenton, and obviously, there's no, hasn't moved anywhere right now, but it is a topic and something that members of the community certainly are interested in. I believe that is it. That concludes our report, and thank, very special thanks to Katie for the prompt minutes on this one. That's a great job.
Just to comment in terms of one of the things you mentioned, Dylan's Wings for Change. And I, and I find myself often saying this at different meetings, only for anybody who is not familiar with it and who may be watching this from home or later on. It is often mentioned, you know, well, Dylan was one of the children who lost his life at, at Sandy Hook. That's really not what the program is about, for anybody who cares to look at their website or, or do some research on it. It is really a program about being nice to each other, caring for each other, empathy, wellness, how to take somebody else under your wing. So I, I don't want any parents who might watch this in the future to be surprised that, well, why are they talking about a, an incident that happened at Sandy Hook that many years ago? Certainly, it is mentioned, but it is only mentioned. It is really not the emphasis of the program, and I think that's really important for people in the, thank you.
And thank you for mentioning that.
Sure. Ms. Mallie.
Okay. Operations met on November 13th, and we had quite a few things. We had Ted Bridges from Aramark came and gave an update on food services. There are a lot of exciting things going on. He mentioned that the trend right now in school lunches is personalization, so they have addressed that by bringing in some more variety, more options like baked potato, top your own baked potato, so the kids can pick out what kind of toppings they want to put on the potato. And they have some different things like that going on, like the condiment section has been expanded so that the kids can pick which kind of condiments they may like or not on their, on their things. And the pizza station, which is the number one selling item, has been doubled in size. They're working on doing, we have spoken about this before, about the meatless, meatless or vegetarian options, and they have piloted a few of those, and they didn't take off as well as maybe we would like them the first time, but there is interest, and they will continue to advertise and, and get the word out that there is vegetarian options for kids at the cafeteria. Then they have added fruit and anti-pasta trays, and, yeah. And then what they're doing also is they have that rotating station in the middle schools, and, and they tie in the, the food that they're serving with monthly wellness messages, so that they're also educating the kids on healthy food choices. The other thing is, as far as, you know, sustainability is concerned, they started a campaign called the SIP Smarter Campaign, Turn the Tide on Plastics in Our Oceans. And basically, it's a skip the straw. And they have signage up to encourage skipping the straw. They've moved the straws out of the general area, so kids have to now ask for a straw if they want a straw. And there's actually real numbers on this. Back in 2000, 2018, in October of 2018, we used 53 boxes of straws, and then this October of 2019, we used seven. So just by moving the straws and having children have to ask for them has reduced our usage of straws by that much, so that's one step in the right direction. Generally, the use of straws, of course, is higher in the younger grades, and then when you get to middle school, it's practically, it's practically nonexistent. So that's, helps with our sustainability points. The new system, the keypad entry system, has been in place since September, and it's working very well. The lines are moving much faster. The kids are getting through the lines much more quickly, so they're able to have more time to eat. We're also bringing in a mobile solution. I saw that in operation today, actually. It's quite interesting. They're going to be able to use that, like a wireless portable at events, that when they have events at the schools and they're maybe outside, they could use this portable wireless keypad, so that'll make it transferable to outside of the cafeteria. Things, things that they're trying to start doing, too, is sending out newsletters. They have new, different newsletters. One is called Fresh and Healthy. They email them to the principals and then have handouts available for the kids, hard copy handouts, and they're also, we're probably going to be adding that to the electronic backpack that gets sent out every week. The other thing that's happening is soups. They started introducing soups, and they're being very well-received, and this time of year especially, soups are very popular. They want to start bringing soups into the elementary level, and hot chocolate also. The committee overall was very impressed with how well the food services was doing, the positive trends it's showing. And now, the next step for sustainability would be to start really working on the composting. And there's also going to be more research on the trays themselves. Right now, the trays are styrofoam, and, well, elementary schools have trays, the middle schools don't use trays, but they use containers that are styrofoam, so there is, we have to do more research to see about the cost-effectiveness and the different compostable tray options and things like that, and there's going to be more to come on that information. Okay. Next, we had a facilities update, and talking about, I know there was a playground accident that was in the news. The insurance company settled that. They have the right to settle that. The playgrounds are checked on a daily basis by the day custodian, and on a monthly basis by the grounds department. And some schools do have cameras facing the playgrounds, used basically as investigational tools. We have some equipment that needs repair. We're going to hold off on the repairs for the one piece of equipment, and the other pieces of equipment, we did recommend for the repairs because it's needed for the icing of the, the salt for icing, for ice conditions in the winter. We had, there was no bid, no bidders for the snow removal at this point, so we have, may have to go back out for a bid on that. As far as ESIP, it's all going well. The contractors are stepping up. Middle School North chillers were set, I believe, past Saturday. Mr. Sanisak, yes? And then the building management system, that's going to be able to control the heat and the AC in-house from, by the phone, should be online and running by December 21st. That's the deadline that we're shooting for. And next, we talked about Sustainable New Jersey. As you saw this evening, all 12 of our schools are Bronze Certified, and that awards were given out in Atlantic City, and we honored all the schools this evening. Middle School South was given a donation of a greenhouse, and the environment club is going to maintain the greenhouse. They helped with the cleanup. We had some damage to the greenhouse during a storm, so it was kind of wonky and crooked, but thankfully, we had some help from our grounds department, helped put it up and secure it. And the school is now looking into off-grid power for heating of the greenhouse, so that's an exciting thing happening there. And we have, the grant cycle is underway. We're waiting to hear. When is the announcement again for the current?
The round that was submitted early September is due to be announced in, in mid to late December, and there's another deadline for submission for March.
Right. The next deadline would be submission for March, and I believe we have all of our schools, or most of our schools, have submitted grant applications for this round.
Yes.
So we'll wait to hear about that, which could be very exciting. That is for sustainability. We also talked about the new administration building, which we are in at the moment. The lease has been signed. I think it's all been said that we're going to be out by March 30th of the old building and going on in here. A couple of meetings back, we talked about having a surplus auction for our equipment and furniture. That is still going to happen. I think we're going to try to time it for the end of March, when we're leaving the old building, to have this surplus sale, garage-type sale for all the equipment. I think we're conducting inventory at this time, Mr. Sanisak?
Yes.
And collecting the inventory and so on. Right. Okay. The other issue that came up is red light cameras on, on the buses. We are piloting a two-camera program right now, and the day of the meeting, November 13th, was the first time we had the cameras on the buses, and we caught three people blowing through the stop signs of the bus within the first hour of the day. So already, they're, they're showing that they work, that we can, and every single video is being sent to the police department for review, and tickets will be issued, and there will be, you know, fine. So the thing is that there's no way to know which buses have the camera on it, so I'm just basically announcing to the community that if you're thinking about going through a stoplight on a bus, you should probably change your mind, not only for the safety of our kids, but there is going to be consequences going forward with a ticket. And Mr. Sanisak pointed out that it's actually a five-point offense on your driver's license as well. So we are partnering with our police department to make this happen, and that's where we are with that. And the committee will continue to monitor that, monitor that as we move forward. We approved the minutes from the last meeting, and that was that. concludes my report. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one other thing to say. I mean, that concludes my operations report. I mean, move on to this?
Please.
Okay. There is a resolution for the Delegate Assembly to approve, and I need to know whether this board supports that. I believe the documentation was sent out to everyone. Hillsborough District has submitted this resolution. I can just summarize the language that they are asking for. In their resolution, they want, they wanted to say, "The NJSBA supports allowing districts to raise their tax levies by more than 2% through a cap waiver where the district currently spends below its local fair share, according to the School Funding Reform Act. The NJSBA further supports using a rolling average of district wealth, for example, using data from the last five to 10 years rather than a one-year snapshot, as a way of smoothing out the volatility in the state aid formula wealth calculation." That is what Hillsborough is asking for. The NJSBA Subcommittee, the Resolution Subcommittee, recommended approval of this resolution with the following substitute resolved language. And they wanted to say, "The NJSBA believes that in instances where districts cannot meet their local share, per the state funding formula, those districts may be allowed to exceed statutory levy caps to meet the local share." Further, they recommend that their, Hillsborough's request concerning a rolling average for wealth calculation be forwarded to the School Finance Committee for further study." So.
I'd like to address the DHS for a moment first, before I open it up to the rest of the board. For anybody who's not familiar with the Delegates Assembly that New Jersey School Boards has, they meet twice a year, and as the Delegates Assembly, it's really brought before the, all of the districts from the entire state have one representative there, or can send a representative. Issues like this come up, and what happens is, after the voting, it, it really is voting on giving NJSBA direction in terms of their lobbying efforts. So voting on something here, or voting something even at the Delegates Assembly, does not create law. What it does is it gives direction to school boards in terms of their lobbying to move forward. In regards to this particular, well, I'll open it up first to the board. Go ahead. Mr. Miller.
Mrs. Mallie mentioned the Resolution Subcommittee from New Jersey School Board Association, which I actually sat, I sit on. When we had the discussion there, the
When we had the discussion there, the language that they're substituting, the reason why we substitute our language is because that policy actually exists, the way Hillsborough acts for that to sit, and the minor tweaks that they act for was the reasoning for the change in the wording that the Resolution Subcommittee is axing for, so that's why you see it. And in addition to that, you should see that they've also asking for a five-year look-back on the financial, I forget the exact wording, it should be at the end of that.
Calculations.
Calculations for the wealth of each district. So they will act for our district as well as other districts in the state to send them the calculation of the wealth for the five years, for the New Jersey School Board Association Finance Committee to look over, to see how it fits with this resolution. So this resolution is what New Jersey School Board Association's current policy is, it just is more inclusive, and that's why the Resolution Committee actually did recommend supporting it, so that's where I am with this this evening.
Thank you.
So I would recommend supporting it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miller.
Anybody else care to mention anything with it? I will tell you that I had a conversation with one of the representatives from Governmental Relations yesterday, Sharon Seiler, about this particular resolution, and I think the important part, for those of us who have it in front of us, is on page 109 in the recommendation, "The NJS believes that in instances where districts cannot meet their local share per the state funding formula, those districts may, may be allowed to exceed statutes." So this is not setting us a hard, fast rule for everybody. For some districts, that might be a situation where they don't want to pursue it, but what it is saying is that they would like the legislators to at least think about the fact that for those districts where it would work, to give them the opportunity to make that move, but certainly not forcing the districts who don't need it, for lack of a better word. So I would also go along, Mr. Miller, I would be in support of this resolution. Mr. Gurman.
Just a question. Am I correct in saying that their situation is not analogous to ours financially right now?
That is correct.
Right, okay. Mr. Sanisak, did you want to weigh in on it?
That is correct. It is not, we, it's districts that, in the state's formula and opinion, are not taxing their citizens enough, would be allowed to tax them more under this, and that is not the situation Hal is in.
Certainly not. Anything else? Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I do have just one question pertaining to Operations, the Food Service.
Uh huh.
I turn my new mic on, I forgot how to use it. This is a sec, and I don't know if this is a question for you, Ms. Malley, or for you, Mr. Sanisak, but this is the second year of our external food vendor partnership. Do we have any kind of data on if compared to this time last year, where the participation is?
Yes, we have the data. I don't have it with me this evening, but I'd be more than happy to share that with you.
Maybe a future meeting, can you give us an update to see if the participation's improved from this time last year? It was pretty good last year.
Yes, we have it. Yes, it is. I don't, and again, I don't have numbers committed to memory, but Operations Committee does monitor that, and we can include it in the next report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as for the Delegate Assembly, do I have to, do we have to make a motion for that, or do I getting a general consensus from the board that that's, I should vote to support this resolution at the Delegate Assembly?
Seeing no objections, I think the direction, it sounds like would just be to go ahead and vote yes.
The direction is to support it? Okay, well, thank you all, I appreciate that.
And thank you for bringing it to us. I mean, there have been times in the past, over the years, where things have happened at the DA where it was not necessarily brought to the attention of the full board. Mr. Miller started doing it when he was the delegate.
Yes.
And very much appreciated, so thank you for not just voting on it.
Yes, I learned from Mr. Miller how to do it right, so.
Well, you're learning from the best.
Okay, thank you all.
Dr. Low.
So the Education Committee met on November 4th. LGBTQ curriculum mandate, so a new law has been passed requiring public schools to teach students about the contribution of LGBTQ individuals. The integration into the curriculum will be mandated for the 2021 school year in grades K through 12. To date, no clarification or guidelines have been provided by the state. Data analysis for equity, leadership teams at the Learning Design, leadership teams and the Learning Design Team have been examining our student growth data from the lens of equity inequality. Protocol, we compared the district's distribution of demographics using the 1718 school year demographics. We drew a picture of the pie chart representing our demographics. That became an infographic using the pie chart as the face of the district. We then compared the distribution of district demographics, too, with a random sampling of 50 students in RTI tiers or classified for special education over the past year. Distribution of demographics should be commensurate with those in the random sampling. Teams found that they were not. The experience was used to provide school-based teams with the tool to examine equity concerns in their school-level data. School-level teams are now working through their equity data. One significant finding, cutting across most demographic categories, is concern regarding chronic absenteeism. The committee viewed a video shared by the Commissioner during the NJSBA convention. The video link is Life of a Privilege examined in a $100 race. We talked about the algebra placement criteria for 2020. The criteria was a limit, was, criteria for eligibility was outlined for the committee. The district continues to refine placement methods to ensure students are placed within an appropriate level of challenge. Each year for the past three years, a portion of the eighth-grade students are not passing the NJSLA Algebra Assessment. Mr. Preston and Mr. Fedina believe they can better find the appropriate level of challenge for students by raising the placement criteria for the pre-algebra placement. Pre-algebra, algebra placement identification is based on multiple measures, and they reviewed that with the committee. The criteria included two data screenings. NJSLA formerly parked data is used only if there are discrepancies within the first two screenings. Committee reviewed a sampling of non-identified data for students placed three years ago. They also viewed a sampling of three-year-old placement data for students who did not pass the most recent administration of the NJSLA Algebra Assessment. Administration will be raising the cutoff bars as a means to better place students. Instructional practices and curriculum revisions will also be addressed. Revisions to the middle school schedule now provide students with 20 additional minutes of mathematics a day for grades seventh and eighth. Mr. Preston and Ms. Fedina will be interviewing students who took the algebra in eighth grade to gain insight and feedback into the strengths and challenges of the algebra program based on student perspective. Parental informational meetings will be held once specific placement criteria is determined. We approved our minutes, and we also reflected on the fact that all of our efforts are in alignment with our strategic plan.
Any questions from anybody? Thank you very much, Dr. Low. Mr. Miller.
The Finance Committee has not met. However, we will be meeting on December 4th, and we'll be coming out with our budget calendar for next year. the Monmouth County School Board Association will be meeting on December 5th at Middle School North. It'll be a joint meeting with Ocean County, and it will be the mandated training for Governance 2, 3, and 4, and if you already have that training, we are adding an additional session for HIB, December 5th, Thursday, December 5th, at Middle School North. So if you don't need mandatory training, we are giving HIB or what school board members need to know about reporting for HIB. That is 6:00 PM dinner, and then 6:30 it will begin. And that is all I have this evening.
Knowledge for the public, once again, just in case you don't know, what happens with school boards is that by law in the state of New Jersey, a board member who comes on is required to go to training the first, second, and third year of their first term, and then they're required to go to additional training the first year of every subsequent term. So that's the mandatory training that Mr. Miller is talking about. Thank you very much. Dr. Jeffrey.
Mrs. Okerson.
We had the President's Council meeting where I attended with Mr. Isola, but both he and Mr. Thor have already repeated everything that happened at that night because it was the same as community interaction.
Thank you. Ms. Mangano.
Okay, then, then, two things I'll add, just in terms of, it's not necessarily reports, but one of the things on the agenda tonight, should this pass, is I just want to point out that one of the pieces on the agenda is to appoint Shannon Johnson as the 10-month Vice Principal at Middle School North. If this passes, and I have no reason to believe that it's not going to, I'd like to make sure I welcome you to the district, so I'm probably being a little bit premature with that, but we're happy to see you in the audience tonight. The other thing I want to point out is that a number of us were at the New Jersey School Boards Conference back in October, a great opportunity to learn it, a great number of sessions on all different topics. One of the sessions that happened there, Mr. Sanisak was then also asked to be one of the key speakers and lead speakers at a conference yesterday at the League of Municipalities. It's a session in terms of shared services that often, when the municipal partners have met, that session has had sometimes a large group of five or six people show up. Yesterday, just the opposite, about 70 people showed up. It was the last session of the day right before dinner, so you would have thought that people were in a hurry to run out. Not only did 70 people stay till the end, but many people stayed afterwards to ask for business cards and to say how much they appreciated the information and really took it to heart, so just want to acknowledge Mr. Sanisak in regards to that session. And I believe that completes committee reports.
Thank you, that completes committee reports. It is now time for the consent agenda and the two addenda items, which I would respectfully, after a moment and a second, read in.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sanisak, I have a question.
Sure.
Anticipated vacancy, does that need to go on our agenda for the board seat?
I don't believe it does. If the board wished to add an A3, we can add an A3. Direction was already given, and the ad will be placed tomorrow, but if you'd like to have one as a matter of protocol, I can read A3 in as well.
Okay. No, I didn't know if we did, I just didn't want to miss it if we had to.
At your pleasure.
We have spoken with both the, with the county superintendent, Dr. Richens, and also with the county clerk of elections, and both of them advised us that the way we're going about it is the typical way to go about it, so I don't really believe that we need a motion or a resolution. I think it just becomes business.
At your pleasure, either way.
But thank you, thank you for asking.
Okay. No. Okay, A1 will be modify the previously approved Board of Education annual meeting notice date for the reorganization of January 7th, 2020, and now take place on Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, at the Administration Building located at 4567 Route 9 North, Halle Main Meeting Room, second floor. A2 will be approved the memorandum agreement and nonprecedent agreement between JHHTA and Halle Township Board of Education as presented in executive session. With your pleasure, may we have a mover in a second for the consent agenda and the two addenda items.
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Okerson, second by Mr. Thor.
Yep.
Thank you. May I take that around, sir?
Please.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Thor.
Yes.
Mr. Gurman.
Yes, with the following abstentions, 3000-2, 5000-1.
So noted, thank you. Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Low.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani.
Yes, recuse myself on 3002.
Thank you. The consent agenda and addenda items are approved, nine votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstentions and recusal noted for the record.
Ms. Johnson, I probably jumped the gun earlier, but having now approved it, congratulations, welcome to the district.
Yes, welcome.
And you have to come to every meeting now, that's, no, I'm kidding.
Yeah.
This is short.
But you have to make sure that you're not bringing any allergy-related treats or foods or?
Only spinach.
Go ahead.
Now time for the second public comment, if I may, sir?
Please.
Whereas the Halle Township Board of Education determines comments from the public may last 45 minutes, and those comments will be conducted in accordance with by law on 164.1, and individuals may be limited three minutes each. The officer with respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board. Mr. Bonjavani, may the floor be open.
Please do.
Are there any comments at this time? Seeing none, may the floor be closed.
Move it.
Back in.
The board is adjourned, thank you very much.